And call this meeting to order. Please rise for the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Jamie Bailey, board member.
Board head at power, board member. She just jumped right in the middle.
Stephanie's the board member.
Jody Thompson, board member.
Ryan Criselli, board member.
Delaney Hanson, student representative.
Chris Nessman, superintendent.
Please, Arnold, staff.
Jeff Barone, staff.
Go on, figure stuff.
Yes.
Eric Smith, staff.
Candice Spalt Smith, staff.
But Dee Walker, staff.
Okay. Approval of the meeting minutes for September fourteenth, twenty twenty-two.
I'll make a motion for the approval of board meeting minutes for September fourteenth, twenty twenty.
I'll second that. It's been a motion made and seconded. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. I don't know if you have any letters.
We do have some, quite a few hires to the point in the year though, so. I want to thank all of our applicants and we're actually really happy that we had applicants. I mean, but as Lisa will note when she gets into her presentation, just in the last month, we cut a lot of new student enrollments.
Thank you, Ryan. Okay, consent agenda.
I'm moving through approval of the consent agenda.
I'll second that.
It's been a motion made and seconded. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Sorry, I got to get down to the bottom of this here. Okay. Discussion items, board meeting.
Eric, can you turn on my ability to share?
Yes.
Alright. Um. There it is. So this is our kind of tentative plan for agendas. Our next board meeting, we have scheduled. Teeter and Crocker, our actual consulting firms, doing our, our, or a master-based learning work. Would also come in and be walking through, we actually have a Harry and Martin Morris as a member of the State Board of Education. And then we're looking at kind of onboarding for the, the revisions of our two thousand series. So one of our board goals this year was updating and revising the two thousand board series. So our plan would be to kind of begin the groundwork on that. And then with the October twenty-fifth and every meeting on out, we'll begin going through an update of the two thousand, or the two thousand series board. Board policies. We're moving back October twenty-fifth to long-range facilities. Jeff had a meeting with his team yesterday, the long-range facilities committee feels that they're in a place to make a community-led recommendation presentation on October twenty-fifth. And also in part of that October twenty-fifth meeting is where I plan to go through the superintendent evaluation criteria. Especially since that kind of lines it out with a lot of your goals. On November ninth would be our CTE Carl Perkins, November twenty-second, the data dashboards from Eric, pre-K on our strategic plan. So I guess I should also clarify. The black topics are topics that we're staying up to date on. Blue topics are board goals and gray topics are our strategic plan. And as we're closing and pulling together the remainder of our strategic plan, like giving the update of where we are in our strategic planning process and what's being completed. So November twenty-second, December fourteenth would be our master-based learning work. Beginning in January is where we begin our focus on kids with the first board meeting of each month. It's going to look at each of the buildings. So Bill Oliver with Alma High School. On the eleventh, January twenty-fifth, career and college readiness. First meeting in February would be the middle school, very twenty-second. Moving forward on a board goal on the adoption of instructional materials process. Elementary school on March eighth, our athletics plan update and how we're moving our athletics program forward on March twenty-second. East Grace Harbor High School, we're focused on kids on April twelfth. Our crisis response and emergency preparedness plans that we've, that we've set as a board goal to begin updating. May tenth, social emotional learning, May twenty-third, or universal design learning on how we're integrating every student's, every student learning need. June fourteenth, our second data, our data summit. On how are we doing and how's our district moving forward? It's our goal by June fourteenth that our data dashboards will actually be fully running. We have a few pieces of hanging out data, pieces of data, but by the end of June fourteenth, we have everything in mind. And then the closing on June twenty-eighth with the final package of the Alma School District Strategic Plan. From all of the pieces that we've presented with our board retreat moving into July. So these are our proposed discussion item agendas. Are there any kind of concerns that you'd like to see?
The May tenth, the social emotional learning.
Thank you. That's so far out.
Yeah, I kind of feel like it's far out.
Yeah.
And I think right now it needs to be in the forefront.
Okay. We can move our social emotional learning work that we're doing. Neural ed and has actually been at, actually our office today, I was tripping over packages of. Materials that we're working on, on not just doing social emotional learning as an add-on, but how it's becoming a way in which we teach combined within our DNA. So really building and adopting a lot of play-based instruction to respond to individual student need at the elementary level. Plans to do more activity-based engagement for our older kids. So I think we can, we could totally move it to November twenty-second. And then I could move Greg to May tenth, create those two programs out.
I, I totally agree with Jamie. I just think that's too far down the list for, really for the situation that our youth is in right now. We need to tackle some pretty critical things probably right off the top.
Well, I think that gives us more time to actually have more information about pre-K. I mean, she really won't have that much time under her. As far as the TK program, so we could be more, this is how it went.
In our pre-K partnership. No, you're right. It'll, it'll actually create a big impact on the type of presentation we'll be doing from. This is what we will be doing, Q, this is what we did, Q.
Right.
Um, one other thing with the social emotional piece of it, do we, you know, back in the day, we did Dare, we did Mad, you know, mothers against drug driving. Is there anything out there right now for kids?
We have a core health curriculum on, on how to teach students about a lot of the safe, the decision-making. One of the biggest things that we found though was. And why Dare not being as funded as, as we were becoming the organizations teaching students about what types of drugs? And the more research is showing ways that we really want to focus on is, do we have a place for all students to be? And that's one of the driving influences on substance abuse. So our proactive measures now and a lot of the modern steps and proactive measures is. Is do we have a place where every student in the Alma School District feels like they're a part of the district? And are we represented? And one of the dashboards we've been building is our panorama dashboard. That's why Eric was asking for the twenty seconds to make sure our panorama data is loaded. So that we have the data on what is our engagement like? Because our panorama dashboard to track on. Do you feel like you're included in the campus? Do you feel like vegetation is meaningful? Is there, do you have a person you can go to, to talk to? So there's a lot of panorama that we're loading in. So I think the data dashboard with the cell would marry nicely on. Some of the data-driven responses to how we reduce substance, how we reduce substance abuse.
Thank you.
So we good with the, kind of the outline of the discussion topics?
Yes.
I think one of the things that I really like is how we have our meetings mapped out. We know what is coming up and we know what to look forward to. So this will be more official. This is, this agenda will get added to the end of all of our future board agendas. A lot of it mapped out, just like we've always done. So you can see everything that we will be talking about, all of our board goals, everything mapped out.
I appreciate the explanation of the different colors. Maybe on the end of that too, we could have a key so that we would remember.
Well, since this has a special, Candace, well, it's going to be, you'll be using a special piece of software. We don't get a colored code. So it will actually go in, it's just a note, but we'll actually have the board agenda and then we'll.
Okay.
Say what it is.
What it is, or what it's representing.
We won't have a choice because of our software we need for our board agendas to maintain clear public records.
Anybody else have any other discussion on that? Okay. Okay, so we'll move on to review of the census redistricting.
There it is. Um, these are our current board. This is our current board. That, our board, our board member districts. And the current results of the current, current census shows a change in our board, in our board populations. So we had an increase in our fifth district by about nine percent. And a decrease of about eight percent and seven percent. In our, from our ideal population, a decrease in our ideal population that balances those board areas by about seven percent and eight percent. General rule of thumb is we want to stay within a ten percent change within our, our zone, within our board districts. So following a census, it's recommended that boards evaluate our current districts. And then if there is a recommendation on the board to pursue a redistricting based upon that, based upon the population. And it doesn't take board action, but what we can show is that we've had a change in our total population. And the demographics of our population. And if we wanted to look at. What these districts would look like. Reevaluated by the population changes. So that's the current map of the Alma School District. So we're not seeking, we don't need a vote. We're just looking for recommendation, guidance of the board on which direction we would like, you'd like us to go.
Yeah, I think it'll be this little town. A little purple. Yeah. Couldn't, I can't see that.
So.
So Chris, can we give you something as general as, would you come back to us with a, a proposal as far as if we moved this boundary line?
If we, if the board would like us to pursue redistricting. We would go back, we, there's firms who do this, we'd enlist the agency to begin a redistricting process to balance. On the board districts. And then we'd come back with a proposal on the proposed redistricts and the board would take action.
To make sure that we are more adequately having support spread out.
That's right. And if you would like to stay as we are, you'd come back with a resolution at our next board meeting that we're under the ten percent population change. We're kind of good at the rate of the population change. And we'd rather not redistrict.
I guess I'm wondering, since we're under the ten, but we know we're in a.
Close to the ten.
We're getting close to the ten, but we also are still in a pretty heavy incline of some new housing. That maybe this would make more sense to hold off one more.
And that could exactly.
For, just so we're not having to redistribute again, because it feels like we might not be right where we would land again.
Yep. And the, the census is done once every ten years, so it would change in ten years from now.
We're not changing next year. It's only based on our census.
It's always based off the census data.
And we might notice a difference, not for ten years. So I retract my, my thought.
And normally I come in with a pretty good thought on where we should go.
Right.
I'll be really honest, we're like right in the line. So. We could go either direction. Our population is off by enough that we would probably move about one row of houses.
Do we have to, we can do this at any time though. We don't have to wait till ten years down the road to do it again.
I have until November eleventh for you to make a decision.
And then we can't do it again for ten years, or we can do it whenever we want it?
We have to just make sure that we're moving forward on taking action by November eleventh. So either a resolution that you don't want to take action, or a resolution that we'd like to pursue taking action without taking action. So unless a firm, they go through the process, it wouldn't take effect right away.
And what does redistricting entail?
We balance the map.
Okay, that's.
From voters.
But there's a, there's a cost.
Yeah.
Yes, there's a cost.
Yeah.
It's a high cost.
So yes, it's not cheap. But you said it's, it's, we're high enough that it's worth talking about, but we're. I mean, we're at nine percent and guidance I received from the ESD was ten percent is your threshold.
Personally, I think we should just.
Okay, we can take action that we, we can draw together a resolution that we can wait, that you, we've seen the data, we've acknowledged the data. But then we can also have a special notation that you have a large, a large amount of construction coming in. And we would like to wait until construction has been completed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any communications and comments? Anybody from ETO? EESP? Ecopa? Admin? Persons to be heard or public comment? Nothing came in additionally, Candace? New business? Approval of ETO CBA?
We completed our bargaining with the ETO and we're recommending approval of the ETO contract.
This is for, this is a two-year contract.
Yes.
I'll move for the approval of the ETO CBA. I will stop.
It's been a motion, go ahead.
And I'm going to abstain.
Thank you. And a motion made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Approval of the EESP CBA twenty-two, twenty-four?
Same deal. We have completed our negotiations with classified group and we are recommending approval of the ESP CBA for a two-year contract.
I'll move for the approval of the ESP CBA twenty-two, twenty-four contract.
I'll second it.
It's been a motion made and seconded. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Approval of the Ecopa MOU?
We have an MOU clarifying language and we're seeking, seeking board approval on the language clarification, removing language from the contract and redefining.
I make a motion for the approval of the Ecopa MOU.
I'll second that.
And a motion made and seconded. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Approval of the EAA CBA?
Yes, we're seeking, we've reached a two-year contract deal with the administrators bargaining group. And we're seeking approval of the two-year contract for the administrators.
I move for the approval of the EAA CBA twenty-two, twenty-four.
I'll second it.
And a motion made and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Yes.
Is this? I retract my motion. I'll make a motion for the approval of the EAA CBA twenty-two, twenty-four.
And I'll second that.
And a motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Really distinct.
Thank you.
It was a busy, busy summer. So I'm going to leave the next one for Lisa. Lisa's going to talk about the directions we would like to move forward with our non-representative employees. And just seeking one of the board for our non-representative employees.
I apologize that there's no paperwork in there. I've been working on September payroll for days now. Hoping you guys approve of CBAs and we got them in right. But what we're looking for for non-representative is we did not get a raise in the prior year, the twenty-one, twenty-two year. When all other employees of the district did. So we're looking at three percent for the prior year, the same as all other CBAs received. And then we're looking to match the CBAs for this year. Does that make sense?
Do you want to see three percent retro to last year?
We're not going retro.
Okay, okay, that was, yeah.
No retro. We're just going to go forward.
You want the three percent that was given last year, you want that for this year? Plus, okay, thank you for the question.
And how long is your greatest contract?
We don't have. Tomorrow, what do you say?
And Lisa, clarifying, non-representative. So these are.
So non-representative would be the district office. And the classified administrators, which would include Caleb, Jeff, and Bill.
And you, do you guys sign contracts or is it just? And we're at will.
We're at will, yes.
Members have been crunched and this works?
Yep. Members' work keeps them, it keeps our bargaining group on parity with the other bargaining groups. We kept actually all the bargaining groups within the same area. So it just keeps all of our bargaining team. Big one is, is these are positions that people move into. So it also keeps a consistent gap for these big positions that people want to move into. That moving into supervisory roles are an increase.
I'll make a motion for the approval of the non-representative employee salary. I'll second.
And a motion made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Approval of the CTE field trips?
Yeah, we put in a proposal of the field trips and conferences and competitions that CTE's organizations would go on for only overnight trips and/or out-of-state trips. It doesn't include all of the miscellaneous regional and day trips. But this would be our overnight trips within state and then any of our out-of-state, which typically is some of our national conferences or state conferences. You'll also see there that we're including going to Spokane for, working with the WSU School of Medicine for an onsite tour and hands-on clinic. That would be for our new allied health program also. Do you have any questions on any of those trips?
I'll move for the approval of CTE field trips.
I'll second that.
Can I go?
I know, I'm sitting here.
It looks like a lot of.
Why don't I have kids in school?
I was doing a quick add-up to how many kids. I mean, I know many of them are repeaters, but that is a lot of experience for a lot of opportunity, for sure.
Good stuff.
You motioned it to me a second?
Yeah, I think I did.
Okay. It's been a motion made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Approval of the out-of-state travel for AASA, redefining ready conference for Bill Oliver and Kristy Kershaw in October to Chicago.
This is one of our membership programs that we're aligning our data. This is the same trip that Christine and Eric went on to Arizona. It's just looking at the national models and how we're able to compare our post-secondary preparedness data with other school districts doing some of our work. This year, this, there's two trips, I think this falls in October and then the spring will be in Indiana. And I couldn't go last spring and actually I can't go this fall either. I have a meeting at Centralia College regarding our own internal partnerships. So I'm asking that Bill and Kristy get a chance to go. It's a great opportunity. This is actually the district where I saw the Arizona, first saw the Arizona State University. So to actually, so we're built a good chance to go see the Arizona State University partnership in full capacity. And looking at how other districts have been building out these dual credit partnerships with these rates. So we're recommending approval of the redefining ready trip.
I'll make a motion for the approval of out-of-state travel for AAS, AASA, redefining ready conference for Bill and Kristy in October, Chicago.
I'll second it.
It's been a motion made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, approval of class of twenty-twenty-six booster fundraisers. Oh, that sounds so crazy.
Mary, Eric, Dylan.
I don't have any questions.
I make a motion for the approval of the class of twenty-twenty-six booster fundraisers.
I'll second it.
And a motion made and seconded. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Approve, opposed? Motion carries. Approval of the Alma Girls Basketball Booster Fundraiser. See, Miss Bowles here.
Tina, just the free throw hoop shoot. What is that? Is that the halftime stuff?
No.
Okay.
It's the thing that the boys and girls usually do together. The, they do the sponsoring, the free throw shooting.
Oh, okay.
They can do it every year. And we basically just wait until the coaches say they want to do it and we work together with them and do it.
And they go out and have somebody sponsor like either per shot or a flat donation?
And, and it's basically, we kind of wait until the boys set the date and the girls work together with them. So it's, I just wanted it on our thing so we're able to participate, but we kind of take the lead on when they want to do it.
I was thinking it was the halftime shoot for a bottle of. Two liter pop, yeah. Okay.
No, there's too much stuff going on.
Gallon of milk, sorry.
And the Krispy Kreme Donut sell us just in the month of February.
Yes. We usually try to get it delivered like around August.
And you guys familiarize yourself with the gambling laws, with the grapples?
Yeah, that's why we don't do two. Can't do more than two or can't make more than five thousand dollars at one time.
Right.
So we don't want to pay the other big monies, so we don't do more than two.
Gotcha.
And we coordinate with the other groups. Like if we have double, we don't fully do that anymore, but we usually coordinate with, to make sure we're not spending money on stuff.
Thank you.
Right.
I will move for the approval of Alma Girls Basketball Booster Fundraisers.
I'll second it.
Then a motion made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Approval of the twenty-twenty-seven, oof, now we're out there.
Eric, you saw that in chat, right?
Yeah.
Okay, I just need to know what cow pie bingo is.
Yeah.
I wish I wasn't one to have to explain this. Okay. And we did check with the gambling laws on this also. And as long as we don't make more than five thousand dollars and as long as we number the tickets, we are within the legalities of being able to do it. It really is kind of not really bingo, I should have said cow pie contest, but they're going to hotwire an area in the field. Yes.
This is why it's not on school property?
Yes, and they're, they're labeling squares with numbers, random, random numbers.
Oh, too funny.
And then we're selling four hundred, four hundred tickets.
Uh huh.
And then wherever the hoops, that's the number who gets the price.
But it was swatters.
Well, if there's really big rules on this, it has to be most of the hoops. And like whoever has the most hoop and if it's two squares, they have to share.
You know how long it took trying to get past being called cow pie high?
No, I'm not going to be, I'm going to watch this one.
I do have a serious question if you. I do have a serious question, if you're fencing it off and having electricity on it, you, you are having a pulse on the fence, or i- it's a hotwired fence?
It's not gonna be with me, it's people, farm people, Heidi, Tesla.
Oh, okay.
That group.
Okay.
They're doing it.
Okay.
They have their cows doing their thing, so, yeah.
I want to make sure, I mean, it's great to get off the fence.
I just out of curiosity, how much is this fair? I mean, how?
Ten dollars.
Ten dollars?
So we're gonna hopefully up to, the price will be up to a thousand dollars if we sell
Right.
Four, four hundred.
Genius, I love it, I love it.
See, and if this works, we're doing it every year, and we are done, no more fundraising.
That's a fun one.
No.
I think they're gonna try to do like a Facebook live.
I was, I was thinking you could Facebook live it.
That's what they're gonna do, yeah.
And a pretty cheap one, yeah.
Because I don't want to do a lot of fundraisers.
I mean, we.
How we're doing the middle school dances is just to give the kids something to do. It is a fundraiser, but same time, we more just want to do like a community thing.
Just from experience, make sure you have a.
And I did go in and talk to.
And male chaperones.
Before I even asked to see if you're female or male.
But dads or male chaperones are important too. Okay. I'll move for the approval of class of twenty twenty-seven booster fundraisers.
Maybe I'll practice. Okay, there's been a motion made and seconded, is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Alright.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Tina.
Approval of the logging rodeo contract.
This is for, we used to do it more often than we have here of late, but Elma FFA in school district, we would sign a contract with the Grace Harbor Fairgrounds to rent their facilities, and we rent the pavilion. And assume that, and then Ag Boosters supports us in bringing in the logs and different equipment. And sponsoring a logging rodeo that is for, most of the schools that participate would be from Seadrill, while we on down to Toodle Lake. Most anywhere from seventy to a hundred students, from usually eight to twelve different chapters, it all depends on the year.
Make a motion for the approval of the logging rodeo contract.
I'll second it.
It's been a motion made and seconded, is there any further discussion? All in favor? Opposed? She carries. Enrollment, I'm kind of excited for this one.
Alright, we are about ninety-four FTE above budgeted. And about, I think, from the eighty students we had in online, where's my AOE first of all. We had budgeted at thirty-five, we were at eighty last year, so actually forty students run our online schools, so when we're up ninety-four FTE, that also includes forty physical bodies are back into our building, so we're up about. And this is just off of our September count, this does not include our October count, where we've had a consistent run of kindergartners enrolling since the beginning of September. So we are bursting at the seams, I think we're gonna have, Jeff has been on the hunt for large enough room closets for classroom space, so I think long-range facilities is gonna come forward with some recommendations, but it's either gonna be a recommendation for enhanced, you know, elementary classroom space, or it's gonna have to be a conversation on on portables, and, and the construction of portable city out the back of the elementary. So we are full. As you guys can kind of see in the rest of the report, are there any, any questions? So just off our September count, we are up ninety-four FTE beyond budgeted.
And I broke out the school, so you guys can see the alternative school beyond.
I appreciate that.
Gets more.
Does you need to pray for the growths? Yeah, yeah, thank you. Anywhere, discussion about that, anybody, anybody? Okay, moving along, thank you, Greg.
I see a big jump in middle school also, it looks like.
Yes, we have a big jump in middle school, and a big jump, we, we have a big jump everywhere. I mean, I think, I mean, the high school has some extra classrooms, don't have extra teachers, so I think, at least the high school's not looking for room closets, but room closets as well. And looking at it, the middle school's up by twenty-seven students again, but they're twenty-five beyond budgeted, the high school's twenty-seven beyond budgeted, and then elementary is thirty-five beyond budgeted. And these do not include our online student rates, and then again, we had another push at the elementary after for, I think seventeen enrolled kindergartners after the first day of school that took us beyond September first, so we're full.
But also, your TK kids will also act.
The TK is gonna generate continuous FTE enrollment. So that program will continue to grow, so all things withstanding our FTE, this should only get larger as the year progresses.
And what buildings are currently restricted on?
Elementary.
Open enrollment for out of district.
Elementary and middle school are restricted. Because on the high school, we could always hire, we need to do, it's not easy to hire right now, it's a bad time to hire. But the elementary and middle school, we don't. This is physically those things.
Alright, budget report, Lisa.
Did you guys get all your budget reports?
I think so.
So we're looking at the year-end fund balance, the eighty-nine around two point five. We still have a few year-end adjustments to make to that, but that's how we're looking, that's up about two hundred thousand from last year. Any questions?
In light of all the recent news, I think that's a great thing for our district. Just in light of so many other school districts and what it's happening, I'm very thankful, that's where we're at.
Curious what'll happen to our budget report with this huge growth, we do have, per meetings with the other superintendents, I think Alma has had the largest growth in Grace Harbor. I think, might be really close to the largest growth in the entire ESD. So I haven't come across yet, there's, you know, some of the other outlandish districts that sell, but I haven't heard of in other districts, the foreigner ESD that's had this amount of growth.
Do we collect data on if these are new families to our area, or just new kiddos coming up?
I don't know.
Maybe after September registration, obviously would indicate moves, yes.
We, I mean, a lot of that was kindergarten, where it was kind of like late enrollment on the after September first, we had a large kindergarten push, so I think some parents that were on the fence on whether or not they were gonna homeschool or not, and then decided that a lot of the elimination of COVID restrictions decided to have their students come fully back. I don't know the difference between families that were homeschooled and that families decided to bring back in personal learning versus who are completely new to the community and if they live in the community. We just know that was a large enrollment, increase in enrollment coming into this school district, but not where they were prior to.
Just another specific question in a moment.
I, I would, it just, it seems to me, it would be nice to know what's driving push or whatnot, so we, yeah. It would be interesting, is that something you can build into it? If they're new to our district, how are you looking?
I think that would be good. You're just being insightful, rest of.
Any other questions? Alright. Superintendent report.
First and foremost, I want to welcome Dee Waters, she is our new administrative assistant, will be our new secretary to the board, we are excited to have her. She's taking on a new role, it's kind of a combination, the board secretary, sorry, the, the secretarial duties for the board, that Candice Carey, also our communications position, that Izzy Cristelli held for our district. So she's had incredibly wonderful two days packed full of learning about all the laws regarding open public meetings and public records, so she might have got about four hours into while legal training and was like, what did I do? We're happy that he is here with us, and we're excited about a lot of the direction that we're moving in, so.
Thank you.
Honestly, actually, that's kind of our big one, because one of the big goals I ask you to take on is bringing back our up-to-date superintendent board report, so I can have support in getting it all through, as normally, so we're just really, really excited to have some extra support in our office.
We will, that concludes our regular meeting. Sorry, Delaney, I looked at her too, I was like, yeah, we're good, drink some water.
I haven't been to a meeting in a while, so I'm very busy summer, especially with a FFA activities I've been doing.
We stopped you on Facebook.
Yeah, I'm on Facebook now, so, like the school district page if you don't. Yesterday, as Mr. Nispens mentioned earlier, we had our FFA open house, and it was very successful, we had probably like fifty or sixty people. They're showing up, learning about all the facilities that we have, different things that they can do in FFA. And, I, I mean, it was just a really successful thing, we gave away t-shirts, so see anyone rocking a last year's FFA t-shirt, ask where they got it. And hopefully it's from the open house, and continuing on FFA, Nationals is coming up. So make sure to keep up, follow the, like the FFA page on Facebook, follow on Instagram, it's gonna be a super cool trip, we plan on posting a lot while we're there. I'm super excited. Next week, which is crazy, but it's already next week, is homecoming week, which is a really big week for the community, it's just gonna see everyone out there again. Showing their support, dressing up in the class colors, or participating in the events, going to the parade, being at the assembly. And just with sports in general like that too, it's really great to see whole community support back out there again, especially after coming out of these past two years, being able to go to a football game and see the stands completely full, it's just a really good feeling to see everyone there, so. I had to get my braces on.
You look nice.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you. Okay, we will move into executive session, we're gonna do a little planning for collective bargaining for thirty minutes, so action will be taken.
We will be back at seven twelve, seven fourteen.
I don't want to compare it to.
Make motion that we adjourn the meeting.
I second it.
It's been a motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.